Thank you, sir.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Good, all right. So, good evening. Tonight is Monday, April 26th, and I am calling this meeting to order. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the presentation for each item for which there are speakers signed up. One thing that I have noticed is there are a couple of people signed up for items that are not on tonight's agenda, and I just regretfully won't be able to recognize those speakers, but I want to invite those folks to send us an email or to come back to our meeting on May 10th to have public comment then where we accept comments about any topic. With that, I ask that we remember that OCS educates our students on the traditional land of the Okanichi Band of the Saponi Nation, asks that we continue to grow as an organization who values authentic connections and repairs harm with the indigenous people of these lands. Now we will have a moment of silence before we begin our work. Thank you for that. And at this point, we will have some recognitions. Dr. Felder?
Yes, thank you so much, and good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, the entire board, students, staff, and families. Tonight, I am so thrilled again to share that we have a number of recognitions. I love the fact that we kick off our meetings at the top of the meetings with recognitions. And so, the first recognition we have for tonight is our administrative professionals. And so, while we celebrated our administrative professionals last week, we want to acknowledge that they are often on the front lines dealing directly with staff, with students, families, and our community partners. Our administrative professionals set the tone for a positive experience with Orange County schools, and they are an integral part of our staff, students, and schools' success. So while we honor them today, we also know that one day is certainly not enough to acknowledge all of our administrative professionals in all that they do in support of our schools and our other work sites. So, thank you to all of our administrative assistants. Thank you so much. All right. So tonight, we also want to recognize our media specialists. And so, National Library Week was actually last week, so April 4th through the 10th. And we did recognize our school media specialists at our previous meeting. However, I did note that we would share the ad that we shared on social media with staff and with the community. So, our librarians or media specialists have been going above and beyond to adapt to our ever-changing world by expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their users. And so, we applaud them again for the contributions they make every day to improve outcomes for students. So, thank you again to our media specialists. So, tonight, we want to recognize our Equity Warrior. And I've shared this quote before, but I think it stands repeating. It's from Michael Fullen, an educational researcher, who said that "An organization simply cannot flourish, at least not for long, on the actions of the top leader alone," that schools and districts need many leaders at many levels. And so, Orange County Schools is so very fortunate to have leaders at many levels. And one set of leaders we have are our Equity Leaders, also known as our Equity Warriors. So, what exactly is an Equity Warrior? Well, an Equity Warrior is someone who is driven by personal values and beliefs. They are passionate about and contribute freely to equity work beyond their assigned role. They are also willing to grow and to learn and become more effective in advancing the equity agenda in their school, the district, and/or in the community. So, tonight, we want to recognize one such Equity Warrior in our district. And to do that, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Deana Keeling, our Chief Equity Officer, to introduce April's Equity Warrior. Dr. Keeling?
Good evening, everyone. This month's Equity Warrior introduction is a little different than previous months. Our Equity Warrior was recommended by Assistant Principal of Hillsborough Elementary, Ms. Jessica Nage. She had this to say. Mrs. Sethi has been an integral part of equity work we've been promoting at our school this year, working with our equity team, providing professional development on using vocabulary to increase students' capacity, to having conversations about hard topics. So, tonight, we're going to see a demonstration of the outcome for students, where you have a teacher who sees equity as not another thing, but the thing. Ms. Bunch, will you play this video for us?
So, while I'm getting the video, if everyone will please mute themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Bunch. Can you go back to our previous slide? This month's Equity Warrior is Mr. Kamara Sethi. Cameron is one of Mr. Sethi's students, and as Cameron demonstrated in his compelling essay, Mr. Sethi creates a classroom environment where students feel not only comfortable to speak out against injustice, but where they are also encouraged to be skeptical and form their own opinions. We sometimes question if students are ready to have difficult conversations, but as Mr. Sethi points out, students want to talk about these things. They care about things being unfair, and they overwhelmingly and genuinely want to fix it. At a time when conversations about anti-racism and social injustice can lead to not only very emotionally charged discussions, but actual acts of violence, Mr. Sethi models for his students that in the face of this adversity, we must still be our authentic selves, genuine, empathetic, and most of all, brave. In addition to talking about women's rights and the rights of people of color, Cameron goes on to talk about the rights for people with disabilities. Thank you, Cameron, and you can watch Cameron's full video on our OCS website and social media. And so, this month, I want to congratulate Mr. Kamara Sethi for being our OCS April Equity Warrior and for the work that he is doing with his students and across our district. Thank you and congratulations.
Does that complete our recognitions this evening, Dr. Felder? Yes, wonderful. Thank you to everyone. All right. With that, do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second? Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Our consent agenda has been approved. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second?
I have a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton, you have something you wanted to comment on before I call the vote?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, did the last motion needed to be with the updated personnel report?
I'm guessing that it probably does. Um, could I have a motion to approve the updated personnel report? We'll just make sure we're very thorough about this. Is that a motion, Mr. Atherton?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Atherton, a second from Ms. Stevens. Promise I haven't forgotten about the other motion that was happening, and we'll go back to it. This is for the updated personnel report. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Thank you for keeping us straight on the personnel report. And now, with that, I have a motion for Ms. Smiley and a second for Ms. Stevens to adopt tonight's agenda. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, yes.
Tonight's agenda has been adopted. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the 2021 Plan A demographic data update. Dr. Felder, take it away.
Why, thank you, Chair McKenzie. Take it away, I will. And so, this is one of a number of updates that the board will receive tonight. So, we want to share Plan A demographic data. As you all know, our elementary students are in Plan A and doing very, very well. So, represented here on this slide are all of our K-5 elementary students. That number is 3,071. Of that, 71% or 2,179 are receiving instruction in person under Plan A. 29% or 892 of these students are receiving instruction virtually or remotely. Next slide, please. So, to break the data down further, what you see is that regardless of the subgroup, the majority of our K-5 students are attending in person. So, they are receiving instruction in person. However, we do want to note that for our Black students, almost 10% more of them have opted to remain virtual. And then, on the next slide, when we look at our data disaggregated based on services provided, so EL, English Language, English Language Learners, students with a 504 plan and students with an IEP, we see here that the preference is for in-person learning versus virtual or remote learning. So, that concludes the Plan A demographic data update. Any questions?
Mr. Atherton?
Dr. Felder, thank you for this. One of the questions I have is, do we know the reason for people staying virtual? Is it because they didn't want to change teachers or waiting for vaccine? Or do we have the insight to that?
So, Mr. Atherton, while we did not send out any, like a survey or request that information specifically, you know, we do get information from families, whether it's through schools or through families directly. And there are, for all the reasons you've mentioned and then some. So, you know, for some families, remote learning is working well for their children. It's working well for their family. For some families, they are still not comfortable from a safety standpoint in sending their child for in-person learning. So, there are a number of reasons why families are still choosing the virtual option.
Yeah, the main reason I'm asking that is obviously for later on in the agenda when we talk about the online academy, you know, question will lead to that, which is, do we know what's going to feed that? I'll save that for when we get to that agenda. And thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Smiley then Ms. Hauser?
I just want to thank you for the slide before this that broke down the demographics and what percent of each group is attending virtual versus in-person. I think we'd given some feedback about that in an early, you know, when we were looking at some demographics at some earlier point. And I know the attachment didn't have this information, and I just think this is really, it's helpful because it's informative. So, agree with, I may have another question when we get to the virtual academy topic, but just wanted to say thank you for this view of the data.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hauser?
I have two questions. And one is, did the transition from Plan B to Plan A make a big difference in people choosing to be in person? And are we seeing a similar pattern in middle and high school in terms of participation? And then, the second question, is there any, is the pattern consistent school to school? Are there differences in schools?
Yeah, those are all great questions, Ms. Hauser. And in an effort to provide an accurate response, I'd like to get back to you and the full board on that. Yeah, but those are great questions. So, good evening, board. Dr. Felder, Dr. Dawson, staff and community at large. I am Connie Crimmens, the Director of Special Education, and I'm here to talk about the At-a-Station app. So, as you know, the screening process at schools is still done through paper questions. And the hope with this app, which is a collaboration between the ABC Science Collaborative and Orange County Schools, is to increase the efficiency of the screening process so to reduce that time that it takes for students to and staff to get into the building. The other big piece is to keep potentially ill students or staff at home prior to them coming or leaving their home and coming into the building. So, I can't think of a better way to show you what the app does other than a video. So, I'm going to have Amanda play the video and then go ahead and loop back about the security.
So, once again, I'll ask everyone to mute.
So, I hope that gave a little preview of how the app can save time and especially the consistency for our, in asking the questions. You may have noticed that within the video, there was one question that still will be asked, and it's, have you or anyone in your household have COVID? And that is the one question, because the app does not capture that fully. So, we are still going to ask that verbally, take the temperature and move through the screening process. Again, and the security, this is an agreement between Duke. There is a signed security agreement so that no personal information is shared outside of Orange County Schools. This is an opt-in. No one is going to be required to use the app, but I must say that the feedback from our pilot schools is that the app has been a time saver. And again, it's the consistency in the asking of the questions. So, you can see here are the final screen. So, if all of the answers on the At-a-Station app are no, it comes up with a green bar, and you can go to school. And if any of the answers on the app are yes, it gives you a red bar and gives, lets you know that you need to go ahead and call your school and let them know you've got a red bar. And then, the school nurse will take it from there, and they will go ahead and do all of the processes that they have if there is a presumptive positive or someone's exhibiting symptoms. Are there any questions?
Ms. Crimmens, I do have a question. Let's say you're a parent at home, and you fill it out, but you accidentally hit the wrong answer to something, and you get a red bar, and it says, "Don't go to school," but you didn't mean to say someone had a fever or whatever the question was. Can you still go to school and talk to someone at the door and explain this and still go to school?
Yes. So, this is, you know, it's user error, and those things are going to happen. So, I, you know, the whole At-a-Station process, again, is based on a level of trust. So, again, I would say that if I'm a parent and I go, "Oh, I pressed the wrong button," I would explain that to the healthcare provider or the principal and say, "I goofed." And certainly, we're not going to, you know, keep students out of school because of human error.
I felt certain that was the case, but I just thought it warranted a public question.
No, I believe that is a great question.
Thank you. Other board members? Ms. Doyle, then Mr. Atherton?
I have a question, Ms. Crimmens. I don't, I'm curious about the timing of the rollout. I know that a couple of our schools, at least, and maybe all, I'm just speaking as a parent here, have like a quicker way to get through because you can have the questions printed out, and you've highlighted the no's. Has that been used at all our schools? Like, has it been speeding up? Because I know some schools originally had delays.
Yeah, the app has sped up at schools. In fact, I've had more schools call and say, "When can we get this rolled out? When can we go forward?" So, the goal is to present this fully to principals this week and then be able to roll it out, I would say, you know, within the next week or so, so that all of our schools can be using it.
So, I have a more generic question. We've seen other districts that have stopped doing this. And I'm curious, maybe to Dr. Felder, the ABC's Collaborative's perspective on asking the questions and the screening, given where we are in the pandemic. I'm not advocating for it. I'd just like maybe a discussion about it or perspective on it.
Ms. Crimmens, were you going to say something? So, so, you know, I think, so my thought on this is that, yes, other school districts have have gone away. I think we need to continue to monitor our metrics, what's going on in the district to see. And, you know, the decision can be made based on health. Dr. Felder, I'm sorry, please go ahead. No, 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 no. Thank you so very much, Ms. Crimmens. And so, Mr. Atherton, as you know, we continue to collaborate and work very closely with the ABCs and the Orange County Health Department. This is a topic for discussion at an upcoming meeting. I will say that what, in a recent meeting that I've had with both the ABC Science Collaborative and the Orange County Health Department, is an acknowledgement that our mitigation strategies, all the things that we are doing now are really working well. You know, we've not had any transmission in our schools. And so, might we eventually get to the place where we don't need to have the screening process and follow in the footsteps of other districts? I'm sure that's on the horizon, but for right now, we plan to continue. They are supportive of that. But again, it's something that, this is, you know, an evolving situation, meaning this pandemic. And so, we're constantly assessing our practices and in collaboration and communication with the health and medical professionals who are well-versed in COVID-19 and making decisions. So, for now, we plan to continue doing what we've always had. Because this is one time for sure, we want to keep getting the results that we're getting.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious if that discussion happened, and I look forward to hearing the results. to hearing the results. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Other board members? I am not seeing any other questions. So thank you so much, Ms. Crimmens, for your delightful video and for being here to answer our questions this evening.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our agenda is Power School Preferred Name Option Update. After the staff presentation for this item, we have one public speaker, and then the board can ask questions and make comments.
So I'd like to invite Ms. Cobb and Dr. Keeling to speak on this.
I'm sorry. I hadn't unmuted. I'm sorry. So good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to speak about the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. They have updated Power School, that is, the statewide student information system, to now display a preferred name option that can be used by any student that makes that request. And that preferred name would now appear on student report cards, their grade books, their diplomas, when they open their computers and begin to work. So when they are in Zoom spaces, it would appear there as well. The only report that must display the student's legal name is their official state student transcript. And using that preferred name, just so we're clear, is not an option that's available to all students in Orange County schools per DPI.
Questions? So I don't, I need to pause real quick because we had a public speaker signed up. I am seeing that he may not be on the call. So I'm just going to check one more time with Mr. Jones and Ms. Stowe to see if Mr. Roman is on the call.
I don't see him by name. Let me check the number.
Thank you.
No, there's no number provided. I don't see him listed.
Okay, Mr. Roman, if you are hearing this and you want to speak, I will be happy to circle back to you and let you speak on this topic. But you'll need to email Mr. Jones or Ms. Stowe so that they can let me know how to reach you, how to unmute you. Okay. So with that, thank you, Ms. Cobb, for that information. Are there questions or comments from the board? Well, I am not seeing any. So I just want to thank you for your work on this. I think this is a really important update for our students. I think one thing to the community to understand is that while this is so great for our transgender students, our gender nonconforming, or non-binary students who may have other names that they prefer to go by and pronouns, this is great for students who go by nicknames. This is great for my brother grew up going by his middle name. This would have been a game changer for him. He wouldn't have been called by his middle name in every class when there was a substitute on the first day. So I think this is a wonderful addition for our community, for lots of folks. And I'm especially thrilled for our transgender students, as this is an added layer of safety for them. All right, I'm not seeing anybody else. So thank you so much, Ms. Cobb and Dr. Keeling. Is there anything else you all need to say?
Yes, I was going to give a little more information about the support for LGBTQ transgender students. So earlier in the year, earlier this year, the board passed gender support guidelines. And in those guidelines, it states that it is the policy of Orange County Board of Education to maintain a safe and supportive learning and educational environment and workplace that is free from harassment, intimidation, indoor bullying, and free from discrimination related to actual or perceived race, color, national origin, sex, disability, age, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And so as part of our continued efforts to create safe and supportive environments, we are going to begin to implement gender support plans. This is a process that we are working on. Our school counselors and social workers will take the lead. And I'm going to give just an overview and then allow Ms. Cobb to speak a little bit more in depth about the the gender support plan and the work that the counselors and social workers will be doing. But the council and social workers trained on developing a gender support plan. This is an option for our LGBTQ students, our transgender students who are transitioning. And what we wanted to do was to really streamline this process. So if they wanted to use the preferred name option, which Ms. Cobb just referenced in Power School, and have a name that they would like to go by and pronouns that they would like to go by, we didn't want them to have to go to a number of different people to get that done. So it is our school counselors and social workers who are already making sure that we have safe and inclusive environments for students. So they know they can go straight to them. Our counselors and social workers will be the ones who will be changing the names in Power School for them. And what is of utmost importance to us is that students' privacy is maintained, that they are respected in this process of transitioning, or just of wanting to be called by their preferred names and pronouns. And so you see on here that teachers and staff are required to refer to students by their preferred name and pronouns. And this option and support is also in place for our staff. And so any staff who would like to be referred to by a preferred name, or who would just like to put a support plan in place, will go to HR. And I'll pause there and let Ms. Cobb give any additional information.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with this mute tonight. But the social workers and counselors, we have met already one time and begun looking at and reviewing our gender support plan. We have received information from the attorney and we will review that and make sure that it is in line, our gender support plan documents are in alignment with the recommendations from the council, as well as making sure that counselors and social workers are comfortable with the plan. And a part of that plan is making sure that we bring in families and students and have a conversation about what they are comfortable with, making sure that we are providing them with all the resources and support they need during their time in the school building. The only big part of this is that we need to make sure that teachers and staff understand that they are required to know and refer to the students by the preferred name or pronoun. It is not an option. And HR is also working with any staff who would like to have a preferred name as well. Are there any questions?
Ms. Doyle? Thank you so much for everybody's work on this. I have a question about how this will be communicated to students. I know that a communication was sent out to families, but that generally goes to parents and not to students. And I'm just curious, in what like forum will students across the district be aware that, you know, the Power School name change is available, and also the gender support plans, the methods under development? Or when will that be presented to students?
So some of this information, again, like you said, has been shared with parents, and some students are aware of it as well. As a result of that, my social workers have let me know that they have begun to receive phone calls and inquiries about that. And so the other part is that we will be reaching, well, they have begun to reach out to students that they were already working with and families that they are already working with. And as soon as we get this, everything solidified through the attorney, then we'll work with Ms. Stowe to make sure that we have a communications plan in place.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Ms. Miley?
Oh, sorry, the only thing that I was gonna say.
We spoke principal meeting. So because some students are going to administrators to ask them as well. And so I think as we get the from the attorneys, the go ahead to be able to have the plans, we can go back and have this more at like the school level. Because at the school level, they have a better means of communicating students as opposed at a district level.
Thank you for that, Ms. Dr. Keeling. That reminded me that that's why we began that work with our social workers and our counselors. So that team, once everything has been approved, that team will do a presentation to the staff in the building to make sure that they are aware, and they know who to refer those students to. So there's no added pressure of multiple people trying to ask the student questions and or do a gender support plan. That will be done with the student support staff. And then from that, what is what is made available, what has been approved by the family and the student to be shared, will be shared with the individuals that need to know that information. And we have received some students who are not in desire of a gender support plan, but are in support or want to have a preferred name. We've already received a couple of those, and we have referred those students back to the data manager and the principal to make that change as well.
And if I could just chime in to, and thank you, Ms. Cobb and Dr. Keeling for sharing, part of the communication plan will include, like, how do we communicate directly with students? How do we make them aware, whether it's posters that will be posted? Because we want all students to know that that this is for all students. Any student can have a use a preferred name. And and so we want them to to know about this option directly as well. But to Ms. Cobb and Dr. Keeling's point, it's better if this information comes through the school versus central, central office.
So I have one question. This might be a question from Ms. Dubison. You know, I know that there are legal requirements around documentation for students' legal names for certain documents. I'm wondering if it's possible to update pronouns in Power School, and if there are requirements around how we document those?
So there's, I think there's really two parts to that. One is pronouns and one is gender markers. And, you know, historically, DPI had an informal policy of requiring a legal change. And this rollout of being able to have your preferred name and pronouns in Power School, I believe, is supposed to be their answer to that. So and and the staff can correct me if there's been any further update from DPI. But historically, the unwritten policy was that the you should ask for a legal change to change someone's gender markers in Power School. And I don't know that there has been a specific update to that. Does, Ms. Cobb, do you know?
I think we have not gotten anything that states that. I will follow up with that again. But from what we got from Power School is is strictly, at this point, the preferred name. But a part of our gender support plan does have that. And it does, you know, state what the pronouns can be. And we would communicate that to staff to support students. But right now, as far as Power School is concerned, they have not told us that. But we will follow up with that.
Okay, I guess what I, one of the things that I'm also interested in is like, I know that class rosters and things like that are generated from Power School. And I guess I'm especially thinking about substitutes and volunteers or people who come in who may inadvertently misgender a student. And so I just have some interest around that and hope it's something that we can come back to. So we can create a system where we're making sure that our students are being identified properly consistently. But I thank you so much for your work on all of this. Ms. Miley?
Yeah, I just wanted to note for any members of the public who are listening to this, who might be interested in seeing the broader gender support guidelines passed by the board, that they can be found on the website, under the number 1710-4021 or 7230. It's a, it's listed as gender support guidelines in any of those spots in our policy manual.
Any other board members have comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Keeling and Ms. Cobb. We appreciate you as always. At this time, I'm going to ask if we can go back to slide number seven. Ms. Stowe wanted to highlight that May is Mental Health Awareness Month and had some things to share about that. And I'm afraid that I somehow skipped over that. So my apologies to everyone. And I will hand this over to Ms. Stowe.
Good evening. No worries at all. Good evening, board. Just real quickly, wanted to let everyone know that May is Mental Health Month, and that's right around the corner. This month raises awareness of trauma and the impact it can have on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of children, families, and communities. We will have a special section on our website that's devoted to mental health events and resources via Orange County schools and also our community partners during the month of May. And we encourage you to wear green at our next board meeting on May 10, in support of mental health awareness. So these are just a few of the events. But if you, anyone in the community wants to visit our site, starting May 1, we will have these posted prominently. And if any of our partners are listening and have events that they would like us to share, we would be glad to do that. And I would be the contact for that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stowe. Anyone have any questions or comments before we move to our next agenda item? All right. Well, now we will move on to our Summer Scholars Academy.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members, Dr. Felder. We are happy to return with some more details about our 2021 OCS Summer Scholars Academy. As we know, Senate Bill 82 is requiring all districts across the state to offer an in-person summer program to help us make up for the year that we've had, for an opportunity for our students who might be struggling with some of the topics that were covered throughout the year, and for some of the students who may not quite be ready for the next grade, and for all of our students, an opportunity for enrichment. Because we know that every single one of our students has strengths and passions, and we want to bring the passion of love, of joy, of learning back to for our students this summer. And so OCS Summer Scholars Academy will be an opportunity for all of our students to catch up on some things, to make sure we're ready for some of the other top things, and then to have experiences for learning some topics that they might not normally have received during the regular school year, and in different ways than they might have, especially this last year, when so much of our work was done remotely and through virtual learning. So we're creating opportunities where they can do more hands-on opportunities, more active, physically engaged types of learning, and with their peers. Because as we visited classrooms, especially with our K through five students being back in person, one of the biggest things, like every single student we spoke with said that they missed their peers. And so this is an opportunity for them to reengage and to find that passion of learning again together. So as we take a look at our summer program, it will be offered in small groups. They will be taught by our staff. And we currently actually, our staff sign up to teach, work with us this summer. It continues to grow. I just looked and we have 175 of our staff, a combination of certified and classified staff that have shown an interest that they want to support our students during the summer. And so this is exciting to hear. And so um, this is exciting uh to hear that because we know we want to be able to offer it small group in person and then with teachers that our kids are familiar with as much as possible. We will, of course, adhere to strict um of health and safety guidance. They, our students will be required to wear masks, our students and staff. And whenever and wherever possible, of course, we will maintain our maximum uh social distancing. We're, so I just wanna note that HB eighty-two has very strict requirements around the number of hours that we have to offer, the types of um academics that is offered, the um and the type of accountability. So we will have to uh do some pre-assessing and post-assessing of where our students are starting as they start the summer program. And with all of the extra learning, where are they in their learning growth by the end of summer? And um, so this is why we are ensuring that especially our morning session. And you, what you see here is a draft sample of a schedule on our slide. And what you're going to see in our morning sessions are that really targeted, specific um type of alignment and work for our students based on their particular need. And there's going to be a combination of really, you know, making sure that if they missed any concepts throughout the year, that they get an opportunity to catch up and learning those. And then to make sure that they're going to be ready for their new grade as um August is right around the corner for that. And then the afternoon is going to be a little bit more um around enrichment. And we're partnering with some of our partners to offer a lot more themed type of hands-on activities. We're actually even opening up to our staff who have different passions about um different learning experiences and getting them involved and helping us create opportunities for our students to learn different concepts and experiences that they normally don't get throughout the year. And then what you'll see embedded throughout the whole day, of course, because we know, just like Ms. Stowe just shared with us, while May is Mental Health Awareness Month, Mental Health Wellness, I'm sorry, Mental Health Awareness is every day for us. And we know how much our students have been impacted um on their socially emotional wellbeing, just being a remote throughout the year with COVID. So we're being very mindful of that and creating opportunities for us to um create self-care time, mindful um awareness and then um incorporating throughout the day our physical activity. Because we know the positive influence that physical activity has on our um social and emotional wellbeing as well. So as you can see, it's a six-week program and we broke down the six weeks into two, three-week sessions. We are asking and encouraging all of our students to sign up for the full six weeks. But we know that some of our families uh will not be able to, for instance, our Hillsborough Elementary School students, because of their year-round um schedule and calendar, they will only be able to attend the first three weeks. And so we really encourage that. And they will have opportunities to make up their other um three weeks or the additional learning time during their intercession um throughout the year. So they won't miss, be missing out, but it'll just be at a different time. And because of the strict guidance from the state around how we are monitoring student learning, we are asking that families do sign up for the full day and for the six weeks as much as possible. We understand that it is summer and they have different plans. And so of course, the accommodations will be made as such should families need to take some time off. And um, but we are trying to be as flexible as possible because we know that uh some families may not be able to ascend, um attend the full day. And so we are, you know, creating the morning block and the afternoon block. And the great thing is that we're providing transportation for our students. We are going to be offering our uh meals for breakfast, snacks and lunch. And then um, you know, in addition to our teachers, we're also going to have our counselors and social workers there to support us as we are um looking to support the whole child or, you know, the heart, mind and soul of our children, right? And so we will have um additional staff to provide all of those services. And again, there's the um brief summary of our daily schedule. That's a draft, so that's, you know, continue to be tweaked as we finalize our curricular programming. And then um, you know, the HB eighty-two does require in-person uh learning. And so, you know, we are not offering remote right now. And but we are offering an after-school component so that for families who may not be able to either pick up their child right at five or maybe they won't be home right at five, we will be providing that extra additional hour of care from five to six. High schools are going to be just a little bit different. As we know, high school students have very specific needs around um course credit and credit recovery. And so our high school principals are working with their teams, looking at the needs of our high school students to ensure that they have opportunities as well to make up their coursework and also to get enrichment as they see to that as well. And then um, for Fridays, because our program is only Monday through Thursday, Friday, there will be childcare available. And um, and actually the sign up that went out last week, there was an opportunity to indicate if you needed that Friday care or not. And if um you didn't, there's additional opportunities for you to make sure that you're receiving um that support on Fridays. And of course, uh, the sign up did go out last Friday to all of our families. Currently, we have three hundred and twenty-one families already signed up, so we're really excited about that. And um, if you have any questions, of course, you can email us at ocs dot summerschool@orange.k12.nc.us and or you can call our district number and ask for someone, you know, summer school and you will be able to get some support that way. And that link and our information is on our website. There's a quick link on to the left once you go to the main page. So um, you can also get additional information there. And if you didn't get the email to sign up, you can go to that website and there's a link there for you also to sign up. Now, yes, you might be wondering, well, how is this different than the summer school that we've had in the past? So there are those programs like our Read to Achieve and our different STEM camps that we've offered in the past. They're, they're still available, but what's happening is we're incorporating that, all of that under our umbrella of the OCS Summer Scholars Academy. So um, you won't be missing anything. And you know, we're really striving to do something different, right? We don't want something that is the regular same old, same old because this is summer. And we want to, you know, try some things different. So for instance, like one of the enrichment classes, we're actually partnering with Apple and some of our um college partners like Durham Tech Community College. And we're offering coding using the SWIFT platform for our K through eight. And then actually, there's going to be a section for our high school students who actually will have an instructor from Durham Tech using the SWIFT platform to teach them an introductory lesson around um coding that they would take, typically take at the college level. So, you know, we're, we're doing things that are different, thinking creatively, innovatively, to create opportunities for our students to do the same. And I think that I've covered most things on um our slide here. And families, please do sign up by midnight, May ninth. Because once we gauge um our enrollment numbers, then we're going to be able to narrow down the locations of um our summer program. So that um, then we'll let you know. And you should have received, when, when submitted, you'll receive confirmation that you submitted. And that's all you need to do is that sub, that um submission. And that is your application for the Summer Scholars Academy. And in a matter of um short time after the ninth, we will be following up with another confirmation and to let you know that we did receive your application and to just confirm um next steps for you. So we're really excited. So families, if you haven't signed up, please do. It's an opportunity for us to catch up, be ready and to be enriched with new experiences. Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Um, Board Members, questions, comments? Mr. Atherton?
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Dawson, for all of the fantastic details. Uh, just a couple of questions. For our IEP five oh four students, how are they going to be supported during this time? Typically, they have um, you know, extended school year options, but there's a lot of students that don't have that. And how will that be different given this offering we have?
Yep. Hey, um, this is Connie. I can go ahead and speak to that. Um, thank you for the question, Mr. Atherton. So throughout all this planning, one of the things, one of the beauties of this is that all families and all students are included in this. So this is not just for students who um do not need extra support. My, the staff in the EC department, we have surveyed our teachers and we've gotten um twenty to twenty-five responses. I'm not sure what the total count was at the end. And our intent, um, and meaning are, is the Orange County Schools intent is that all families, all students with IEPs will be able to be included in all of the programming. So this isn't um exclusive, exclusive of anyone. And um, I will take liberty to say for um Dr. Gaiman while I'm here, um the same will apply for our English language learners and our students who are academically and intellectually gifted. They too will have um additional support so that their needs are met.
Thank you.
Oh, and you, I'm sorry, you asked about advertising. So at the parent session um on Wednesday of this week, I will be going ahead and talking to um, talking about this program as well. And then um, we are having our teachers reach out to parents um through their class dojo so that all parents for all um exceptionalties and, and groups that need additional support will be notified.
And in addition to that outreach, um each school will be doing additional outreach because, as you know, Read to Achieve has certain requirements as well. And so um Ms. Wilson is leading that effort and is monitoring student um data that uh lets us know which students qualify for that program. And we will be doing more um individualized and specific outreach to specific programs such as RTA that um will ensure that every family that needs this opportunity and deserves this opportunity, that we're reaching them.
Fantastic. The uh, the second question I had was, you know, obviously, there's going to be some students that have never been in our buildings and haven't done the protocol. Is there going to be an orientation session prior to June fourteenth or July twelfth to allow the opportunity for them to experience the protocols and get familiar?
We can definitely make that happen, Mr. Atherton.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I, I have several questions. Thank you for this. I'm really happy to hear that a hundred and seventy-five teachers have signed up. I'm hopeful that that three hundred students changes to three thousand. Because as I understand, the spirit of SB eighty-two is to catch kids up who have had a difficult year. So so the first question I have is, do we have a sense of where our students stand on the achievement spectrum? And how many are behind? And how many of our kids that are behind are signing up? And are we making special efforts to get that? And I think you said we're working with the principals and the teachers in the schools to actively enroll kids, so I think that's cool. And yeah, I, I think you implied this. I wanted to, if your child is behind in reading, but their math is fine, can they just go to reading school? Will they have that option to, to be selective?
So Ms. Hauser, um, in response to that particular, absolutely. And that's why the, especially in the morning, it's gonna be very customized for our children. If they're, you know, and this is why it's a combination of remediation readiness and enrichment. Because if they don't need that extra support in um math, then that's not where they go, right? The extra support will be where do they need that extra? And then to ensure that they are being pushed and still growing in all areas, that's where that enrichment readiness and enrichment comes in. And for our, do we know how many students are, because you're absolutely correct, Ms. Hauser. HB eighty-two is really uh heavy emphasis on our at-risk students. And so we are, um, we do actually have, especially for our K through three, that breakdown by um how our students are performing on their assessments, especially for literacy. And we have those numbers and those students specifically identified and for each school. So Ms. Wilson actually shared the latest rendition with us today. And um, and we're planning that outreach to those families. And for um middle and high, that's when we're taking a look, how are our students doing um grade-wise and identifying those students? And that's part of uh the reason why too, we ask the principals at the high school level to take the lead on really identifying for us, what is it that they need to ensure that they're meeting the needs of those students who have failed those courses or who, you know, who need to, even before COVID, that maybe they missed a credit and they need to make up courses. So that is a major focus of this whole program. But what we wanted to do was make sure that we made this program accessible to all of our students. But as far as our concerted effort at, you know, at the outreach and making sure that we've identified the students who need that additional support, we are making sure that we're doing that at the core of this work. And but even for like high school, HB eighty-two says they have to offer enrichment as well. So we're making sure that all those opportunities are available.
Great. And just um, um, quick question. One is if you're a teacher that signs up for it, will we allow you to put your child in our summer school? So let's say your kid goes to school from Durham or Person County and your kid goes to school there. Will we allow the teachers to put their child in our summer school?
Yeah. So I believe um, yes. And I would say that, you know, of course, our priority first goes to our Orange County school students. But I, you know, I don't see why we could not allow them to um bring their own children to the program.
And one final question. Some, some, uh, we're hearing that, that students have, they've, some have had a really rough year. Some are just really shut down to learning. So the spirit, or the enthusiasm that you're bringing is terrific. But are we gonna offer maybe a session or some kind of special program to um restore the confidence of our kids who are really having a hard time?
Yeah, yeah. So um, in two ways, yes. One, just their socially emotional, just by starting every morning with a morning mindfulness um approach to just kind of getting, helping our students to be, you know, finding themselves and just reminding ourselves of our self-worth and our children of their self-worth. And then making sure that what we are programming throughout the day, that the students are going to experience success. And this is not, you know, something that you're going to say, hey, you're getting, you're getting graded and you're, you're F on this. Like that is not our approach. Our approach is around ensuring our students experience success. And so that's why we're being very mindful of that, the enrichment piece of it. That again, it's just come, learn, have fun. You know, it, it's by doing, there's no right or wrong, especially in the afternoon. Because of the way that we're doing these programming, it's creating opportunities for students to learn the way they learn, right? Let them explore the way they go at it. And, and we know each one of us, we have our own different approach. And so the curricular programs that we're looking at is, will allow the students to do that? To remind themselves, oh, I can do this. Oh, I am smart. Oh, I am, you know, more than capable of doing this. And those are the types of experiences that we're looking to create for our children.
Ms. Smiley?
Um, uh, Dr. Dawson, I'm, so I had a question around whether we had a prioritized list of students. We were really hoping to come. Um, and it sounds like we are gonna identify particular students like that. And and um, I guess my broader request um here as a board member is I would love to know what are, um, do we, you know, do we have concrete goals for the program? Like measurable outcomes that we want to see? And then um, what, and I would like to understand what our measurable um outcomes are in terms of our success app, for example, um enrolling students who um we've identified have the most unfinished learning, who would like, we really um want to help them um catch up. So there's, there's, I just have a general request. I would, I would like to, at the end of the summer, I would like to know um how we wanted to measure success and how we did against those measures of success um for the program.
And Ms. Smiley, I will actually get all of you those specifics because HB 82 actually lays out a lot of that. In ELA math and science, especially for our younger grades, we will be, we will be required to give our students a pre and a post. So I will get the specific language and requirements from HB 82 and I'll put that in the update for you, if that's okay.
That'd be great. Yeah. And I think, and it might be that our program, for our program, we have those goals because they're a state requirement, but also we just want to see certain outcomes, right? And in terms of enrollment and then in terms of, you know, academic or social emotional outcomes. So yeah, I think that that would be helpful. I'm also wondering, assuming that there will be some students who really have a lot of unfinished learning, but will not, for whatever reason, sign up for the camps. What are we planning to do for those students? How are we thinking about addressing the needs of those students?
Yeah. I think, you know, it first starts with our personalized outreach to that student and that family to make sure that they are aware of this opportunity and to connect with them to understand why they might not want to participate and see if there are any barriers of their, that, that we can remove to ensure that they understand that we are providing transportation, that this is a full day opportunity. So that if families, you know, are concerned about, you know, listen, I can't be taking my child half a day. For them to really make sure that they understand, we are trying to customize this to remove as many barriers that we know often get in the way for all of our families to access these programs. But I think most important thing is we have to do the outreach and we have to listen to our families and try to understand why it is and what their concerns are. And we do understand that there's still that component of the fear of being in person. And if that's the case, then we will find out what it will entail to get them access to the instruction. And I think that is where we have to be open to what possible remote options can we provide our families if that is the only option. We know that HB 82 does require it to be in person. So we are promoting that. But again, you know, I think even just the items that we had before this, that it matters, the importance of meeting the individual needs as best as possible. So, you know, I think it'll start there is that our customized outreach and listening and understanding what their needs and identifying what the barriers are. So we can address them.
And if I could, great question, Mrs. Smiley, just add that even beyond this summer opportunity, we know that there'll be more work to, that, that needs to be done. And so again, looking at enhancing staffing in schools, looking at a Saturday academy, looking at allowing schools to come up with plans that are customizable to their schools that best meet the needs of their, their students. And so this is just like one layer of, of support to our families. We know that we're not going to accomplish it all in, in the summer for a variety of reasons. So this is, this is a year-round approach, is just starting with this summer opportunity, but there's a lot more to come.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Dr. Dawson, I, I look at the schedule and I, I get really excited. I would, I would love to participate in morning mindfulness. And I love the way you've structured it. And the emphasis on enrichment and different things in the afternoon and also the collaboration with Apple and Germ Tech. I love that. I mean, that's really like the building at the all tiers, the, the CTE type approach that we've, we've been talking about. So I really, I like seeing that. A couple of questions I had, one, I'll just say them real quick. One is, does this, when you mentioned numbers of families, you mentioned 321 families signed up. To my ears, that means more than 321 kids because families might average a couple of kids each or something. Another thing you mentioned that some of this can be incorporated for the year, the year-round schedule. And am I correct in recalling that the S R dollars have an end date of something like November? And so it would have to be in the, for using those dollars, it would have to be in those early breaks. And then finally, my third question is, and this, this came to my mind as, as Ms. Smiley was talking about measurable outcomes. And I was thinking of the presentation of the great outcomes that I guess was called Summer Jump Start. I'm remembering it being piloted at New Hope with Ms. Wilson and the big boost that that gave to kindergartners and first graders. And does this, like, is that still happening or is that happening here? Or is that a separate thing? Is there no longer a separate Summer Jump Start? Is this, is this rolled in here?
Yep. So it's all rolled in under this one umbrella. So, so Summer Jump Start is the art, the need to achieve. And so that component is one of the programs that we're offering. So you can, so when you're looking at the schedule, you think of like what's going on in the morning, that literacy block, right? So all the students who need to be in that program would be in that program in the morning. But we didn't want to limit our students that always need that type of academic support to miss out on the enrichment part. And that's why we're adding that component to the afternoon. So yes, it's all under the umbrella. There will be those measurements, just like they had in the past. That's why I was saying that, you know, when we say HB 82, like having those specific requirements, we will, we will map that out for you. And then, yes, I think especially because we're throwing in additional, like social emotional learning, right, opportunities that we would probably do, like a pre and a post, just around student. Where are they, you know, from their perspective and then see where they are at the end of the experience. And so, you know, we'll be able to identify those required as well as what OCS is going to use as metrics for measure, measurement of success. And we'll get that to you in that. And then, Ms. Doyle, 322, I want to say are the individual students. Cause we've asked families to fill out one per student because we need, we need to, that information for planning, but also then making sure we go back out and getting all the transportation routes. And what it's looking like is about 75% of those families so far are selecting the full six weeks. And then 82% of that so far are selecting the full eight to five. And we had this morning, it was 191 applicants. So from this morning to this afternoon, it jumped to 322. And so I think that the more we do the outreach and the more families, you know, hear about it, these numbers will go up. And then of course, as we're monitoring, if we're seeing that the students that we need signed up aren't, that's when we will work with our schools to, the teachers to make sure we're reaching out to those students. So, did I get at everything that you asked?
Just the last part, is there an end date with the S R dollars for?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I'll step in here if that's okay, Dr. Dawson.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, the S R two, there are two end dates. The S R two funds expire in September of 2023. And the S R three dollars sunset expire in September of 2024.
So this, this program, there is an end date to this summer extended learning program. But it does give our year-round calendar students at Hillsboro Elementary that October intermission to get that additional support because they'll only have the first three weeks in the summer. So that's, we've touched base with Ms. Kreider on that and we're continuing to look at what we'll need to do to use that opportunity for the Hillsboro elementary students.
Ms. Hauser?
Just want to build on the Doyle's questions about the readiness program at New Hope because that was targeting rising K 1.2, had a morning session for kids and an afternoon session for parents. And I wondered if, you know, it's really helped to teach parents how to work with Orange County schools. And actually, some of the middle schools are, are even saying, can you give us that for sixth graders who are for the first time learning about middle school and changing classes and teaching the parents about how to work with their middle school schedule. So I was curious if we're building that in. And in the spirit of that, students who are not students of Orange County Schools, sort of will be coming in to Orange County Schools next year. So is this a way to, to kind of preview them and get them ready to start?
So this will, so this is, you know, for our Orange County Schools registered students, the only, I think acceptance is because of our exceptions, sorry, is for our staff's children. And the Family Success Alliance, I think is what you're referring to, Ms. Hauser, with New Hope. And we've been in communication with them and they have agreed to, again, because we're trying to put everything under one umbrella, put that program under here. So that actually will still be happening. It's just all under the umbrella of OCS Summer Scholars Academy. So just like our Wells Grant, which is a STEM grant targeting specific students, especially in our middle grades. And so that too, we've met with that foundation as well, so that they understand that, that grant work will continue and that we will be adhering to the requirements and implementing that grant with fidelity. But again, it will be under the auspices of our Summer Scholars Academy. So.
Other questions? All right. I'm not seeing any. Well, you're kind of, I've got some icon in front of you that I can't really see. So if your hand is up, let me know. I don't want to miss you. Okay. I think we're good. Thank you so much, Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
The next item on our agenda is the 2122 Online Academy.
Well, Dr. Dawson won't be going too far.
But you know what, like how we do here, we are a team. So I'm going to ask Dr. Gammann to get us started. Because again, everything that we've done, even though, you know, one individual is presenting, of course, please know, there's a whole team behind this. And especially our curriculum instruction team around our Summer Scholars and now at the Online Academy. But the whole team, because it takes everyone from transportation to, it's, it's all of us working together to make sure that these programs are ready. So Dr. Gammann, do you want to help?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, I had actually started. I must have been muted. I do apologize. Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Good evening.
Good trick, Dr. Gammann. Good trick.
And community, I'm presenting this evening an update on the Orange County Schools Online Academy. Currently, Senate Bill 220 requires school districts to provide an online 100% remote learning option. However, this requirement, as it currently stands, will sunset at the end of this academic year. While we are uncertain of the future status of this state requirement, Orange County Schools endeavors to continue providing a 100% remote learning option, starting with the 2021, 2022 school year. Although this option is open to students K 12, OCS wants to ensure families are fully informed of the expectations of the Online Academy to ensure success for your children. While our teachers have done a remarkable job this year, and we certainly cannot thank them enough for lifting the blended learning options for students and, and teaching students concurrently, both face-to-face and remotely. We do not wish to replicate the concurrent teaching beyond this school year as this option does stretch the capacity of our teachers beyond a level that is sustainable long-term. So based on research and communication that we've had with other districts who are currently standing up a, a virtual learning option, we know there is a lot of variance of what models can and will look like. And so at this time, the Orange County Schools Online Academy is still in the planning stages, but there are a few things that we do already know. What we do know at, at this point in time is that surveys will be administered to families and students to get a sense of the family's interest in attending, as this will ultimately drive the, the overall planning and structure of the Online Academy. Orange County Schools recently submitted and received approval for a new school number from the state. Should we have the interest level and need for a standalone virtual school? Students will learn asynchronously at their own pace and attendance will be tracked. To be successful in the self-paced Online Academy, students will need to be goal-oriented, self-motivated, independent learners, capable of setting and maintaining a daily schedule and have a reliable daily access to the internet. Orange County Schools will use our in-house blended learning curriculum. For example, at the K 5 level, we use the Bridges Math Curriculum. So we would use that blended learning option that our teachers have worked so diligently to convert into a kind of a blueprint course format, as well as other proven programs that we learned about through last year's Summer Jump Start and we carried on through this year, such as Reading Eggs and Math Seeds to provide daily lessons. Students are expected to commit for the full year with the option to transfer back to their assigned attendant zone school at the semester mark, should they feel the virtual school is not the best fit. The virtual school will not be able to offer everything that traditional schools offer, such as band, chorus, certain career tech education programs like welding and project lead the way, as well as specialty courses like IB. Orange County Schools Online Academy will offer all graduation requirements. High school students will still be able to participate in the College and Career Promise Dual Enrollment Program. And high school students who choose this option can participate in athletics at their assigned attendant zone school. So to ensure families are able to make the most informed decision, students will be required to participate in an interview process and complete a readiness assessment. Should the virtual school be a good fit for the student, families will be required to enter into a signed agreement, ensuring that students and families are aware of and consistently meet the expected criteria, mainly being regular attendance, keeping up with the pace of the schoolwork and then maintaining good academic standing. Those are things that we currently know. Information that we are certainly still monitoring are questions such as how many students will ultimately seek this learning option? What will staffing look like as a result of that demand? And are there any impacts on certain policies when we're thinking of extracurricular activities? We know some of those things are already currently under review. So we're kind of monitoring that as we move forward. So at this time, I'd like to open it up if folks have questions.
Mr. Atherton?
So just two questions. One is, you mentioned athletics for high school. Would there not be any at middle school?
So at, at this time, I know that that is in conversation specifically through the, the High School Athletic Association. We do know that, that we can hold the high school athletic portion of it. I can definitely get back with the team, Mr. Johnson and others to, to investigate more around middle school.
Okay. And actually, I had three questions. The driver's ed, would that, how would that be handled? Would there be a separate driver's ed or they would go back to their home or their district school to sign up that for that at high school?
At, at this time, the intent would be that they would do that through the, the school that they are zoned to. However, if adjustments need to be made to that, especially as, as the demand kind of crystallizes over the next few weeks, we could definitely come back if there are updates with that.
And Dr. Gammann, in terms of driver's ed, you just reminded that this year, this was the first year that we piloted the online version of driver's ed. So we're looking to do, do online in the future. So yes, they could take driver's ed from there being online.
And the last one is, do we have an estimated cost? I know that we had a 400K original, which was the principal and some staff. But I know there's curriculum work y'all are doing and support. You know, being able to support IEPs or can a IEPs by report is part of this, you know? I guess I'm just wondering in a cost structure, if we have any ideas around that or that's work, still being worked on.
So I'm just going to to object here, Mr. Atherton. So those are things that we are still working out. Because again, it'll depend on the number of students that are interested. And we will be sending out an interest survey end of this week. We didn't want it to go out at the same time as Summer Scholars Academy signup. So we're just kind of giving it like a week break to just let them focus on that signup. And then sending out a very quick interest survey to gauge, because we didn't want to assume that based upon our number of families that have been selecting remote this past year due to COVID, we didn't want to assume that would be about those same numbers. Because, you know, it's very different reasons why that's happening. So once we have the interest survey, then we will be able to have a better idea of cost. And just to, again, what we're trying to do is how we're doing staffing is not to impact our school staffing allotment. So we're looking at a model that would be an adjunct, kind of like an adjunct faculty model. And so once we get those numbers, then we will update the board on an estimated budget. It's a little bit more aligned with some numbers.
Okay, yeah, this is a very different model than what we have now. And I hope, you know, everybody takes the time to understand that. So we don't have any miscommunications through this as the parents, you know, absorb and process this model. Thank you.
Ms. Smiley and then Ms. Hauser?
Thank you. Yeah, I have some concern about the asynchronous model here. When I, when I think about who's the most important target audience for the Online Academy, I think it's, you know, a student who has high-risk medical conditions, who, you know, needs to wait for the vaccine in order to feel safe going back to school. And the Venn diagram of that student and the student who is ready to function totally independently in their schoolwork, like, not all the kids are going to be in that Venn diagram in the middle, you know? And so I guess I just have a concern about the shift to this model of of five to six hours of asynchronous, given who I think it's sort of most important for the Online Academy to function for. I don't know if anyone could speak to that to that choice in particular.
So Ms. Smiley, and that's a great question. And it's one that we, as a cabinet team, have had discussions around. I do believe it's important, I think, for us, as we're going through this this ultimate kind of interest level process, surveying, you know, who ultimately the students are that are showing interest and the rationale, like their reasons for that. Like I said at the beginning, this is a proposal. We certainly are leaning toward the asynchronous option. But we're also very mindful that with that demand and those reasons, we're going to have to be flexible to try to meet the needs as best we can. But I wouldn't want to say what a definitive answer is at this point. But I think we are in discussions around that and have brought up a lot of the similar points that you've made this evening. But Dr. Dawson, I don't know if you have anything additional you'd like to add there?
The only thing I'll add to it is that, you know, I think we risk losing those students to other school districts who are offering a live option, if going in person really isn't an option for their family.
And I do want to just make a brief note, and I know Ms. Krimmons could say this as well. But, you know, we have always had students who can't come in person because of a medical need. And the traditional tools that we have had for those students will still be available. So only with more, we have a lot more virtual tools than we used to. But things like Homebound are are still on the table for those students with disabilities who have a medical reason not to come in.
Dr. Dawson, did you have something to add to that before I move?
Yeah, just real quick, I think there's that, that we're trying to address an immediate need, right? For COVID concerns, but also we're designing an online academy for the long term as well. So it's it's serving dual, but we're also planning that this is beyond, you know, once the pandemic kind of ceases and hopefully goes away anytime soon. We're long-term planning that this is an online academy that will be here for years to come.
Well, one thing I will echo with that spirit in mind, that Mr. Atherton brought up is sports. And I think that if we are trying to capture community members who might be interested in an online learning platform at home, how sports could really be a great draw for those families to our Online Academy. So if that's a possibility for us to keep on the table, I would certainly be interested in continuing to discuss that. Other, Ms. Hauser?
Here in our experience in the last year, and also the really wonderful adoption rate that we've had for returning to in-person for K-5, you know, are there grades, and I'm thinking especially those early grades that we, that we really don't like this virtual option for? And are we going to discourage people from participating unless it's, you know, it's not like an option. It's like, you know, just discourage them unless it's really absolutely needed. And in that context, is there a point, and I don't know what your expectation is in terms of the interest in this, but is there a point where we can't afford to offer it, that we just don't have enough participation across all grades?
And that's, and that's why, Ms. Hauser, that we're still in this proposal phase and looking at, because, you know, and just to be very transparent, the things that we're looking at is that should there be not enough interest to stand up a standalone virtual school? What are other options? Because the reality of it is, this need for attending school virtually is not going to go away, right? It's not going to go away in the workplace, it's not going to go away for our schools. So the way that we're looking at that is if we don't have enough students for standalone, we do have a model, our self-paced model that we're currently implementing, that I think is one of those things that came out of thinking differently in responding to COVID. That is working well. We have a number of our students who have chosen to stay 100% remote, self-paced, so it is asynchronous, with a learning coach, right, assigned to them, who is monitoring and making sure that they're getting the support that they need, you know? So that is working. And what, how that's happening is our students, those students are staying enrolled in their assigned school, right? And then, so we wouldn't need a standalone school, and that is a model that could continue. One thing that we did learn, though, and what we don't want to do, is what we experienced thus last year of this hybrid, teachers trying to teach those who are in-person and remote. Like, we learned that that does not work. It doesn't work well for our students, and that doesn't work well for our teachers. But the self-paced model could be something that if we didn't have enough students for a standalone, that we could continue to take a look at.
Ms. Smiley?
I'm just curious what timeline we're on for really solidifying this and getting final decisions from families. I saw that Wake's Online Academy, their like deadline to sign up is sometime in the next couple of weeks, I believe. So they're on a pretty aggressive timeline. Their rationale for that, I think, was that they couldn't do the planning until they had like firm numbers. So what kind of a timeline are we on for families to be finalizing their decision?
We'll have to, now that we actually received the school number last week, we can now start working aggressively and put together a timeline, and we will get that back to you.
One thing that I just probably will keep rattling on about our Online Academy is this need to, in the time of COVID, allow families to, or students to keep their places at choice schools, even if they choose the Online Academy for this coming year with respect to COVID. I mean, I think in other years, it makes sense that it's a standalone situation, and they, you know, they're students and enrolled in the Online Academy. I wonder if there is a way that students who are in programs and want to go back to their schools will be able to do that. So I would just like to keep that elevated.
So Ms. McKenzie, we actually did spend some time discussing that. And where we're currently at in our thought process is that if a student is in a choice program and they're not ready to go back in person and they want to attend the Online Academy, that of course, they would be encouraged to do so, but they would be giving up their choice seat. Because the reality of it is that we have one school with the waitlist. And it wouldn't be fair to those families and those children that are on that waitlist and are willing and want to go in person, couldn't go because that seat is being held for someone who's in an online, taking the online option. So right now, where it stands is that we're looking at, they would give up their choice seat. They can, after the next year, they can go back and apply for the choice option. So that is where we're at right now.
Yeah, I'm just going to put it out there that I think that's a huge mistake, but I'm just going to leave it. Other board members, any other comments, questions? Ms. Doyle?
Just a quick follow-up of Ms. Smiley's question about timeline. And I realize that this has all been a big undertaking, Dr. Dawson. But so just a rough timeline, if it's going to be, you know, it's the end of April. We have two board meetings in May. Do we anticipate that maybe by the second board meeting, we'll have, you know, by the end of May, we'll have like a timeline, a deadline, or something like that, that you want to go into summer knowing who's registering for fall, or what's kind of the rough timeline?
So definitely for the first meeting in May, right, that we will have a timeline for you, if not sooner, right? And for the first meeting in May, we should know, I'm trying to remember when our meeting in May is, May 10. So by then, we should be able to have already some interest in numbers, because we will have already surveyed the families on that and have some ballpark numbers, how many families and in what grades are interested. So I see that as initial milestone in our timeline would be the May 10. But at the latest, by May 10, we would have the full like timeline of when we would know the firm dates, firm registration, and the launch. We would have to have that timeline for you before May 10.
Thank you so much.
And if I could go back to the conversation around the choice programs. And so we certainly recognize that, you know, there are students who, for one year, even a semester, may want to be in an online option versus in that choice program. So we are just continuing to look at it from all angles. Because again, as Dr. Dawson said, there are students who are on that waitlist, who would like to have those seats as well. And so we haven't locked in on anything yet. We will certainly bring that to the board. But it is something that we continue to consider all angles and options with regards to students in choice programs and perhaps those students wanting to to be online and have that option as well. So what I'm trying to say is that we will come back with a more definitive approach, as well as, you know, the survey opportunity will certainly let us know how many students are we even talking about. Some more information to
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, you know, I don't mean to make such a dramatic statement. I just know that families who are, have chosen these programs and been loyal to them, if they're feeling like they need to be at home because of health considerations, I just can imagine a lot of heartbreak if they lose a seat. And I just think it's something we should keep in mind. And I know that you all take that into consideration, and these aren't easy decisions. But just wanted to keep that on the table. Ms. Hauser and then Ms. Smiley?
Just a question that Mr. Atherton raised a few weeks ago about, is there any consideration about doing a joint online academy with Chapel Hill School?
So a great question, all great questions. You guys asked some really good questions. So yes, yes, in terms of this, certainly reached out and have touched base with Dr. Hamlet. And so, you know, we're going to explore that. But I can tell you right now what they're planning to offer right now. Again, you know, they too have to survey, see who's interested. Their online program is geared towards high school students only. So they're not looking at a K-12 option. And so, but, you know, like, Orange County Schools, that's subject to change. You know, one of the things that a lot of districts have been waiting for is some guidance from the state. Like, are we, not that we wouldn't offer, even if the state didn't require. But as Dr. Dawson said at the top of this presentation, the Senate Bill 220 ends at the end of this school year. And right now, as recently as Friday, because I've been reaching out to the state, like, can you tell us definitively? What, I mean, are we going to be required? And if so, you know, is what we're planning to do going to be acceptable? And and other districts have been asking the same. But as of Friday, hearing directly from the state, at this time, there isn't a requirement. And it's looking like there won't be. And so at the same time, we're not being told that we can't. And so what a lot of districts are doing is going ahead and applying for the the school number. So we did that, with the understanding that we could always withdraw it, and trying to draft some plan and that will best meet the needs of their students. So right now, we're looking at K to 12, and Chapel Hill is looking at just grades nine to 12. And so, but there could be some opportunity to collaborate around that. But it depends too on what curriculum they plan to use. We didn't get that much into the weeds of superintendents. We thought we would bring our teams together after we get through tomorrow and and let them have a conversation and see if there's any opportunity for some collaboration. But our programs may look very different. That's one of the things I wanted to share.
Mr. Atherton?
Oh, I didn't have a question. I was just going to say, thank you for looking into that.
Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, I think, and thank you for that. And I do think high school is probably the most likely place of overlap, so we'll see. But I do just want to share that I have a reaction to the sort of student enrollment process readiness assessment, the sort of like gatekeeping on the front end. As much as I really understand that like that asynchronous model only works for some students, I do worry about the equity impacts of then who is able to learn remotely or not. And so I would, you know, I think that those things probably mostly go with the asynchronous. The asynchronous makes that especially important. So if the asynchronous changes, maybe that changes. But we're just encourage us to, at a minimum, be looking at the data about which students are or are not able to enroll in the Virtual Academy, broken down by different students.
Thank you for that, Ms. Smiley. We actually had a conversation about that today. And a very lengthy conversation, and we want to be on guard for that as well. I mean, while we will have these, that assessment and conversation with families, at the end of the day, if it's something a family wants for their child, you know, the child may not be the most independent learner, but there could be an adult at home or will be supporting the child in that effort. And if the family wants to participate, we would certainly give them that opportunity to do so. We just want families to be clear on what they're getting, because it is different the way that we're planning it now than what we currently have, because we can't repeat what we currently have. It is just a bit much. And our teachers have done a phenomenal job, but we we know that that concurrent teaching is a challenge. And so if they're clear on what we have to offer and they know what kind of supports their child will need. Again, we've got, what, 60-some-odd children who are doing very well of a variety of levels. Some of them get a lot of support at home and some of them don't. Some of them, when they get the support, it's after what the traditional school day, because that's when the adults are available to support. And they're making it work, and the children are learning. And so that adjunct learning coach model seems to work as well, where the kids have an opportunity to come together with classmates. They have someone from the district who's checking in, a certified teacher checking in, answering questions, helping to guide their learning, monitoring their learning. So we just want families to be clear about what they're getting. And if they think it's a fit, but they're And if they think it's a fit for their, their child, we certainly would not stand in the way of them giving it a whirl. But we will also let them know if from our perspective and what we see, it's not working, we would be remiss as educators if we didn't speak up and say, you know, it's, it's, it's not working. Let's see what we can do, try those things and see if those things help. But at the end of the day, it may not work for, for every child. Yeah.
And just to add to that to Ms. Smiley, just like Dr. Gammon said earlier too, that this is, this is new. And what we've learned from other schools in the state that started and a little bit further along than we are, they started out like this as well, but then it evolved, right? And now as the school grew and as the number of students grew, they now are able to staff differently. And they've also expanded from being asynchronous to more synchronous. So it'll depend on, you know, it's, this is a start for us, right? And then we don't know where it'll go as we see the interest and how, you know, we are able to staff differently. But what we didn't want to do, especially being first year, to just say, hey, schools, know that you're gonna lose staff, right? And we wouldn't even know right now, like how many staff, because we don't know where our kids would be coming from and what grade level. So it's all evolving process and nothing that's set in stone, just like, you know, what we're saying with Mrs. Kenzie. Right now, what I shared with you, our initial thought was yes, you know, they would have to reapply back to choice, but like Dr. Fowler saying, as we continue to get more information and learn more about the students that want this program, then, you know, we'll have more information to make decisions on and we'll always, of course, come back to the board and say, okay, here's, look, here's what we found out, here's, here's some more information we have. And then of course, we will have that conversation with you as this process evolves.
And if I could just add this one other item, just as an FYI, we are not doing this work in a vacuum. There is a, a, a number of school districts that are working together to share best practices, lessons learned and to figure this out for next school year. So but it, but I think what's consistent among all of the districts that are working together and sharing ideas is that, you know, that concurrent model is a challenge. None of us want to repeat that again, if we can help it.
I ask if there has been conversation about there possibly being sort of two tracks on our online academy, like having one asynchronous track for students who really want to be self-paced and then not repeating hybrid again, but having, you know, a, a track for students who want excellent synchronous online instruction, which a lot of our students have had this year. Is that a possibility? Has that been discussed?
I believe ultimately it's going to come down to, again, the, the demand, but also staffing. And it has been discussed in terms of not being currently at a place where we would have the staff to support a synchronous option. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't be able to revisit this as we go along. I'm just seeing what that interest level is and what we do have the capacity to do.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. I, I mean, I think it would be, if we had enough students and we were able to fund it through, you know, the ABM of the online academy, I just think that having an option for families who really do want that, you know, live instruction to be the core of their kid's day, that could be a really positive thing. So just won't beat a dead horse, but interested in that. Um, other board members? Right. Thank you, Dr. Dawson and Dr. Gammon so much for this update. And we will move on to our next item, which is the next year's bell schedules.
Good evening, board members. We bring before you tonight a recommendation for the bell schedule for the 2021, 2022 school year. Just as a reminder, the current bell schedule during COVID, our elementary schools have started at 9:30 and ending at 3:00. Our middle schools are starting at 8:30 and ending at 2:00. And our high schools are starting at 11:00 and ending at 4:00 PM. On the slide before you, you will see the before COVID start and end times during the 2019, 2020 school year. Our elementary schools during the 2019, 2020 school year were starting at 7:50 and they were ending at 2:50. Our middle schools were starting at 8:20 and ending at 3:35. And our high schools during the 2019, 2020 school year were starting at 8:45 and ending at 4:00. During our listening learns, we heard from our families that transportation had a few challenges and some of those challenges revolved around getting students to and from school on time. As a district and staff, we recognize one challenge with getting our students to school on time was with our bell schedule and allowing enough time between the tiers for transportation to get students to and from school on time. After working with our principals and the transportation department, we're recommending that the start and end time for elementary schools for the 2021, 2022 school year remains the same as the 2019, 2020 school year with a start time of 7:50 and an end time of 2:50. With that being said, we believe there will not be a need for before school care on the elementary level because students will enter their classroom at 7:30 as in the past. The after-school program time will remain the same from the end of school day, end of the school day until 6:00. The after-school program will have more of an academic focus during the 2021, 2022 school year. And the program will also continue allowing students to place, to, uh, place to complete their homework with support. We are recommending that the start time and end time for the middle schools move back by 10 minutes to a start time of 8:30 and an end time of 3:45. And with the high schools, we are recommending moving their start and end time back by 15 minutes with a start time of 9:00 and an end time of 4:15. And again, the recommendation for these minor tweaks in the starting and times of the high school and middle school level is to help alleviate some of the challenges that we've had in the past of getting students to and from school on time. And we believe that this is the right time to tackle this issue with our transportation department. And you're reminded that this is an action item for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate it. Are there any questions or do I have a, Ms. Hauser?
Just a question.
Mr. Atherton?
Just show my ignorance on this. I just learned a new term called bell to bell. And there's a question about whether our schools have enough time to deal with transportation to truly keep classes going bell to bell. And I'm wondering if that was part of this, why you're changing these times? But the real question is, do our schools have enough time to meet the transportation schedule to meet, to, to keep out their classes going and then meet the transportation schedule?
I think I understand. Yes, I mean, this, these are still the same amount of hours that we, that we had in place during the 2019, 2020 school year. So the instructional hours are the same.
Okay. I just wanted to
Ms. Hauser, I'm just trying to understand your question. Are you asking if students, we are, will this schedule shortchange students in order to get them to a bus or in the morning during arrival, will they miss any of that, of the instructional time as a result of the bell schedule? Is that what you're asking?
I heard that some of our schools have cut their instructional time to meet the bell schedules. I know it sounds crazy.
No, it doesn't.
So I just had heard that recently and I just wondered if
Yeah. So, so what I'm aware of, what I'm aware of is that we have students, particularly at the middle school level, who are consistently late every day. I'm not sure about needing to leave early, you know, meaning before the bell rings start lining up to, 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 for dismissal, but definitely in the morning, I actually went and observed it for myself. And so what I understand is that part of that, what created that was the bell schedule. It did not allow for, well, yeah, the bell schedule, because it didn't allow for enough time between bus runs to, to, at the different tiers. So this will free up that time so that students should, that, that issue should not occur. Principals were very much a part of developing this bell schedule, taking a lot of factors into consideration. But it should, that should not happen. Jason, can you say anything, Mr. Johnson, more to that, having led this work?
And I think you're spot on. We did, we did have a lot of problems at the middle school level with a lot of late buses. So working with transportation, working with principals, we thought by moving some of these times back, it will give, it will give us enough time between the tiers to ensure that buses are showing up on time and we're able to maximize our instructional time.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So at the high school level with the bell changes, is this going to create any challenges in the promise program? For example, transportation to and from Durham Tech, which we, we offer today with classes starting at different times? Because for example, if, if a class now starts at nine o'clock at Durham Tech, they would need to get to school before nine and transfer over there. Is, is there any problems that we know of that this creates by doing this?
No, Mr. Atherton, no problems at this time. And discussing this with the high school principals, they did not bring that up, but I will circle back around with them just to ensure we're able to alleviate that issue, if it becomes an issue.
It's a fantastic program that we offer transportation, not all districts do. And I think it's fantastic we do. The, the second one I had was less about academics, but for sports, a lot of times you have your junior varsity, it starts at 4:30 and then your varsity starts at 5:30. And then, you know, travel and all that. Do we know if this is gonna ripple or cause issues with that as well?
And I would tell you, Mr. Atherton, the four o'clock time always created an issue, especially in the springtime, where a lot of our sports are played earlier. So yes, I mean, it will, there's a workaround in terms of students being able to get opportunity to make up their work, but the four o'clock time also causes issues for fourth block class.
So it didn't make it any better, but we are aware of it. All right, thank you.
Anyone else or do I have a motion to approve the bell schedules?
Motion to approve. Second?
A motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Bell schedules are unanimously approved. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. The next item on our agenda is the resolution to improve student learning conditions. A special thank you to Christina Clark, teacher at Cedar Ridge High and president of the Orange County Association of Educators for elevating this resolution and bringing it to the board's attention tonight. Ms. Smiley has offered to read it for us, so I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Resolution to improve student learning conditions in North Carolina public schools. Whereas Orange County schools is committed to strong public schools that ensure safe, nurturing and academically rigorous learning environments. And whereas educators and school workers are the most valuable resource we have in supporting the social, emotional and academic growth of our students. And whereas education support personnel are the only state employees in North Carolina without a minimum base wage of at least $15 an hour. And whereas students and families throughout the state continue to navigate the psychological and academic stress and trauma associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. And our schools need additional human resources to provide adequate mental health and academic support. And whereas public dollars should be invested in schools that are accountable, publicly managed and provide a free public benefit to all North Carolina citizens and residents, not diverted through vouchers into private institutions that are exempt from the North Carolina constitutional requirements to provide a sound, basic public education to each student. And whereas North Carolina's investment in our students and schools has dropped from 52.5% of our state budget in 1970 to just 39% of the state budget in the 2017 to 18 school year. And whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has increasingly shifted the burden of funding public schools to local county governments, which in 2015 appropriated 24% of all funding for North Carolina public schools compared to 21.5% in 1998. And whereas North Carolina invested $2,866 less in each of our students than the national average for the 2019 to 20 school year. And an investment consistent with the national average would provide an additional $20,724,046 to better support the 7,231 students enrolled in Orange, allowing us to offer additional resources, reduce class size and better compensate school workers. And whereas North Carolina school districts have more than $8 billion in unmet capital improvement needs. And whereas local governments fund 97% of school repair and construction in North Carolina, as the General Assembly has not approved a state bond for K-12 capital needs since 1996 and eliminated the North Carolina Public School Building Capital Fund in 2013. And whereas revenue for K-12 school funding can be raised more efficiently and equitably at the statewide level by the General Assembly than by individual counties, yet many rural and lower wealth counties have had to raise local tax rates to support students and school workers. Therefore, be it resolved that Orange County Schools urges each local legislator and each legislator in the North Carolina General Assembly to co-sponsor and vote for legislation that, one, increases North Carolina's per-student spending in order to more equitably support student learning throughout our state, including in rural and less wealthy districts, by enacting the reforms listed below. And, two, expands funding for districts to hire more school nurses, counselors, social workers, psychologists and instructional assistants to support the academic, social and emotional wellbeing of students. And three, provides education support professionals with a living wage by guaranteeing a $15 minimum base pay for all North Carolina school workers and adjusts the relevant pay scale accordingly to avoid wage compression. And four, reforms the salary scale to provide a 5% salary increase in subsequent cost of living adjustments for active and retired educators and to restore longevity and master's pay to improve educator recruitment and retention of experienced educators. And five, approves a statewide K-12 school construction and renovation bond that provides local education agencies with much-needed funds. And six, restores state healthcare benefits for school workers who retire after a lifetime of service to our students, including individuals hired during and after January of 2021. And seven, reduces barriers to student learning by expanding funding for broadband, high-speed internet access in North Carolina with an emphasis on rural, lower wealth and communities of color that lack access. And eight, freezes funding for the North Carolina Private School Voucher Program at current levels until the policy objectives named above have been achieved and requires any private school accepting vouchers to meet the same academic, financial and transparency standards as our other institutions receiving public funds. Adopted this the 26th day of April, 2021.
Thank you so much for reading that for us, Ms. Smiley. Does anyone have any comments before we have a motion? Well, okay, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton? Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
The resolution is approved and I will make sure that I send this to our legislators later this week. And I thank everyone again. The next item on our agenda is the capital investment plan updates.
Yes, thank you and good evening again. I'm going to provide a high-level update on where we are with our capital investment plan projects. And I will go off of my notes because I, this was a lot, so I didn't want to put all of this in text on the slides, but to show you some pictures of some of the work that's been done. So recently completed work at Cameron Park Elementary School, phase one of the project has been completed and this work involved the replacement of boilers, complete kitchen renovation that included new appliances and the serving line equipment, new classroom HVAC units, mechanical piping and pump upgrades, new classroom windows. Let's see, new exterior metal siding. Let's see, new exterior metal siding and. Creation of a new security vestibule. And of course, there was painting and new LED lighting. New flooring and H that control upgrades. And. As you can see in the picture there on the left, you'll see some new dumpster enclosures and some grading and paving. Some tree removal and landscaping. So that was a good portion of our phase one. This summer, we will start a part of phase two, which will be. The replacement of flooring that involves asbestos abatement. And then phase two of the work will start. After that, which most likely won't be until into the next summer. But if we can get it done started sooner, of course, we will. At Central Elementary School, the final sections of the roof replacement was completed. And now there is. New roofing and fire insulation, which is noted by the R value. That's the rating rating that they use to determine the grade of insulation within the roof. And so. We are at our value of thirty nine, which is industry standard and a good rate to have. All of the exterior asbestos siding panels have been removed and replaced with metal siding. And during this process, also the exterior lighting was upgraded to the LED lighting. And if we go to the next slide. At ALS Stand Back, the final sections of roof placement. Was also completed and again with the R value of thirty nine and all of the exterior asbestos siding panels have been removed. And replaced with metal siding. And again, upgrade of the LED lighting as well. And at Orange High School, I think that is the. So what you see, I'm sorry, the if you go back just one slide. What you're going to, what you see on the right hand side is that's just a picture of some work that will be done in the future. So I'll talk about that in a minute. But if we do go on to the next slide. At Orange High School, this was a little bit, you know, harder to to see because it's not so much on the outside right right now, right? Um, but because of the COVID constraints and our buildings. Not having students and staff for a good part of the year, they were able to advance the work at a faster rate. And it's the HVAC geothermal project. That progressed much faster and currently all of the student classroom areas are complete, except the CTE ag building. The next focus area will be the cafe, kitchen, auditorium, lobby hallways and gym areas. And the goal is to get all of this work done prior to the next school year. And the major undertaking will start within the next few months. At Cedar Ridge High School, as we know. The new J wing is complete. And our students and staff have actually moved into that new area and appreciating the. Innovative architecture there and the site has. The new ag CTE facility site work has been completed as well. The site has been cleared and excavated. In preparation for the new barn work outside. The barn outside learning area. The site is graded and the utility infrastructure has been installed and the planning and design are in the final stages with modifications to be determined. Then the work will begin this year and can be completed as the school is in operation as where this is outdoors and the project. Could begin as early as this fall, but again, this is not the full completion of the barn. As I think the. As this is just the work to to lay down the groundwork for the rest of it to be built. And that has not been planned as of yet. Grady Brown at Elementary School, the roofing work was also completed on several sections of Grady Brown. Now, this whole process actually has taken seven years, but the whole complex now does have a new roof. And again, the majority of that is the R value of thirty nine. All of the exterior asbestos siding panels have been removed as well as like similar to the other buildings. All of the exterior lighting was upgraded to LED lighting. And we do have some new and current work that we're looking ahead at and and as mentioned earlier with ALS Stand Back. Later this fall, we'll design the process for mechanical equipment renovation project at ALS. This project would be for the entire campus and will require coordination. To shut down systems at various parts of the campus and supply temporary heating and cooling methods. Or would mean a phased concept over multiple summers. So this would update and improve the main for pipe heating and cooling system. And the associated pumps. And that was that picture that you saw earlier. And when this is done, it will also mean a much improved. Energy efficiency controls. And so that'll be important for us to get that installed. And then at Central Elementary School, while one portion was part of the work was done this summer. The main electrical service, the main electrical switch gear equipment and the main electrical heater wiring will be replaced. We did have the plan to start the whole HVAC system this summer. But as previously shared in an update. The equipment and the materials that we would need to do that work and get that started actually because of the high. I don't know if it's the high demand, but there is a long delay backlog in when we would be able to. Receive that equipment would not be until this fall and to start that work. It would not be feasible to run school and to be doing that work. And so what we did was we took the larger project and we're separating out this electrical work. And doing that this summer in preparation for starting the HVAC. Replacement work, let's see here. Closer to winter break so that. By then we should have the materials in by then. Yep. So the majority of all of the work then will be done, not this summer. The project will be finished by the end of next summer. And but starting with this electrical work now will prevent us having to. Stop the work that started, wait for them to do this and then catch back up. So we're just trying to make sure that we keep the. Work moving along, even though there's the delay in the availability of the equipment. So the overall project will provide the school with the high efficiency HVAC equipment and improve building conditions for temperature and air quality. And again, the original plan was for this summer, but equipment delays have impacted all all trades and equipment procurement. That could not be guaranteed to have a building ready in August. So. That's where we are with that. The campus does have a new roof with the upgraded insulation completed. Fall of twenty twenty and we should start seeing the energy savings from those upgrades. And as shared with you earlier, Cameron Park Elementary School. This summer will we will be dedicating the removal and abatement of all of the asbestos flooring on the campus. And new flooring will be installed as was designed as part of the renovation project in both phase one and two. And the district has funding that was left over from the abatement work at Grady Brown and Central Elementary. And as previously shared. That that is the funding that will be used to complete this flooring budget. And the unforeseen windfalls allows this work to be done. And it'll be done before the portion of phase two work, the duration for removal and installation will be several weeks. And was never an option without this funding. So this is good that we're able to do it in this way. Late fall of twenty twenty one, the final roof replacement work will be designed and bid for summer of twenty twenty two. And some additional work. At the Board of Education, the design process will begin for a standby generator for the Board of Ed building. The majority of this work can be done, of course, with the occupancy. And once the design, the contracts are completed, then that work will begin. Potential time for this project will be fall of twenty twenty one after the projects are complete. And for district wide. As we know, we've heard some concerns about some of our buildings not having hot water. Because at the time that that was piped, that piping work went in some of our buildings. Hot water wasn't an option at that time. So we're looking to design for hot water upgrades. To be determined, of course, on a school by school basis. And this is partly due to the facility age and to some areas of the schools not having any hot water when originally designed. And the goal is to provide hot water in the highest traffic areas first. And then as many areas as can be funded and existing water and electrical infrastructure. Will have to be assessed to determine how to proceed with any upgrades. And this is an outside engineering design project. Just an update on our sonar control security system. As you know, many of our school buildings have been receiving that upgrade for. School alarm systems. This implementation work has been ongoing this whole year. We have completed the basic system installation requirements for all schools. Now the work of training and integrating the equipment and operating systems for our staff and district. And that has that training has been ongoing. And in the process of we are in the process of assessing our walkie talkie system. Right now we have kind of a. Mismatch of different types of walkie talkies and different numbers at each of the schools. And so we're looking at a district wide replacement and we're currently talking with some vendors. To assess which is the best model. And then we are also researching to upgrade our phone and intercom system, which will be necessary. And that's part of the district wide upgrade and. Fland Cheeks Global Elementary School, designing and planning are to begin for plumbing fixtures. Replacement, water and sewer infrastructure upgrade and architectural renovations to bathrooms for the campus. And mechanical system replacement design work will begin this year. And the goal is to have the work completed and move towards some upgrades and replacement with work to begin next summer. And once that begins, then we'll be able to determine the duration and the manner of implementation. And then Gravelly Hill Middle School roof roof replacement design will be done this year for that campus and the leak proof warranty is about to expire. So we'll need to get working on that. And multiple areas of the have had repairs under this warranty. This work will be designed and put out to bid this fall with replacement occurring over next summer. And this will be the first replacement work done at this campus. Now at New Hope Elementary School, there's we're in the process of assessing the need for carpet replacement or looking to instead of replacing the carpet, we're looking at. Putting down VCT or otherwise known as the vinyl composition tile type of flooring. So that has actually started, assessment has started and the maintenance department, actually, they will handle that contracting with local vendors instead of using. Like a general contractor to avoid any architectural fees. And the team will work with, of course, the campus and principals to determine what's the best flooring option. And then design for roof replacement recording repair will also begin this year for that campus for New Hope. And just a few more left here, Orange High School. There will also be work required to create plans for a new restroom facility between the one hundred and two hundred wings of the campus. As you may know, the restrooms off of that main hall are out of ADA compliance. And so they need to be improved. For our students and visitors. And this will begin as soon as the RFP process is completed. And so some of the smaller projects going on across the district at the Annex Annex Building, we're looking to repair the canopy and exterior painting. And we're working with. A contractor to vendors to get that work going. At the Welcome Center, we're looking at HVAC control upgrades. And the equipment has been purchased, so we're looking to install those soon. And the district facility assessment, we need to determine. If a new assessment is required or warranted. Because our last one was done in two thousand thirteen. And we're looking to create an RFP to get this process started to identify a firm. And there's some paving that needs to be done this summer at Orange High School and CWS. Where the bus slots and the associated driveways are. And then across some of our locations, the district lighting improvements. For instance, at New Hope, we're looking to replace the lighting to LED lighting for more efficiency. And then we'll look to do that at other campuses as we move forward based on funding. And then another project at Central Elementary School, looking to repair failing brick and mortar joints to the exterior of the building in this. We're looking to try to get that done this summer. There will need to be an architectural package that needs to be put out to bid. So that's a highlight of all of high level highlights, right? Of our capital investment plan projects that are currently. Some that have been completed, some that are in progress and more to come. Based on our current funding. So. That's that's that. And when we ask for additional maintenance in operations. Members, it's because we have a lot going on with just a few people trying to oversee, support and manage all of the work that's going across happening across the district. That completes my capital investment. Plan update.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Ms. Howzer?
Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you. There's a couple of projects on here that have been a long time coming. And the idea of getting hot water in all our schools is really exciting. So thank you for that. I just have a question. In the capital report that went to the county for the budget, it said that we were. Funding all the HVAC, the elementary HVAC projects this year. So did I misread that? Or are we, this is the bond projects now?
So I'm going to ask. Ms. Rath, would you have, I'm not.
Yes, hi, thank you for the, I'm sorry for the delay in getting connected here, but I think Ms. Howzer. I think I'm understanding your question and the fact that the the last. Draw of the bond funds scheduled for those HVAC upgrades is coming in the on July one. So that should be the final. Draw to address those HVAC projects. Is that your question?
That's what I read in the capital plan. So the question is, are we doing those since we're getting the money, are we doing those projects?
And those. Kathleen, I may have to kick back from you and please don't let me overstep here, but from my understanding, those are the ones that we are currently in the process of designing. And the funds have will become available on July one. And as the design work is finished, then we will move forward with the. Next phase, which would be the quote unquote construction phase.
Yeah. And so the that would be. Correct, Ms. Rath. And I, you know, the issue that we're facing, Ms. Howzer, like even like Central, we wanted to get all of that started. This summer and what we're experiencing in the trade industry. The pricing of everything is just sky high. And then the availability of the materials that we need to do the work. It's very delayed, like three to four months behind. And so that's why even like with Central, we can't even get it started this summer, even if we wanted to. The materials just aren't available. So that's why we've had to. Take a look at how else we can keep the projects moving. Until the equipment is available. So we're we're because we heard. You before that whatever we can move up and try to ramp up and move at a faster rate. We are trying to do that as funds are becoming available.
I'll just add that in the past, we've had HVAC failures that have been very expensive and remediable. So and I kind of feel sometimes you feel like we're running on borrowed time. Especially as we run these systems for the summer and stuff like that. But thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Atherton? And then Miss Smiley?
So I wanted to confirm, I didn't hear it explicitly, but HES's air conditioning system is part of the plan, correct? For the three that were talked about in the capital improvement?
So, Mr. Atherton, it is part of the plan. What as I have been stepping into this role and learning is that we are waiting to. What, as I have been stepping into this role and learning is that we are waiting to, waiting on a more firm direction from the board as to what's going to happen to that overall complex. And, and once we know in which direction to go with that complex, then we will know, are we going to expend the allotment that has been set aside for the HVAC system at that building? So we're kind of waiting for direction as to in which way we should proceed. So...
I'm very concerned on this. I mean, the air quality of our students, regardless of the board's decision on when. I can't imagine we would move that school in a time that the lifespan of that equipment. But hopefully that will be on a soon agenda item for us to discuss because that's a big deal. The, the second question I had is, I have noticed that some of our storage units or if you will, trailers that we've used in the past for storage, not, just to be very clear, not trailers that we have students in and are for education, that is not what I'm talking about. But I have noticed there are some trailers that seem to be in very bad condition that probably should, you know, not exist anymore just over time. Do we have plans on what we're going to do with those? I mean, I could give you an example. So there's one I know for sure at, at Grady Brown, for example, there's a trailer back there. It definitely is leaking. You can, you can see from the outside, there's, you know, damage and stuff on it. But do we have plans? Because if, I mean, if we're not using it for that, I don't know why we even have it on site. It's, to me, it becomes kids, dangerous for our kids, our staff and no value for us. But is there plans district wide to go reevaluate all of these things that we've had in the past?
I will have to get back to you on that one, Mr. Atherton.
Okay. I was just curious as we were talking about all the facilities and such. I appreciate that.
Other board members?
Yeah, I was gonna go next. Yeah. You know, I do, I don't want to open a whole conversation about the HES buildings right now. I do want to just reiterate the like, why would we spend $20 million when we can spend 27 and get an incredibly new facility replacement? And, and that conversation maybe is a county commission, a conversation out with the county commissioners. So I don't know how we bring them into a new plan, but wanted to suggest that. And I just wanted to say it's exciting to see so much progress that I know is the result of a lot of hard work. And that I am excited that we are getting ready to do an RFP, I think you said, for the district facility assessment. Because I do think that seems like a necessary step at this point.
Other board members? Ms. Hauser?
I just want to add my voice to, I'd like the HES conversation to come up soon. So there's, I know we don't have any plans anywhere or funding to replace the school. So, and we have an air quality problem. So I would like to have that conversation sooner rather than later.
Dr. Felder and I will talk about it. Thank you. Other board members? Anything else? All right. Thank you so much for the update, Dr. Dawson. We'll move right along to attendance zone assignment of Collins Ridge.
Yes. So thank you so much. And I'll just keep going here. As we know, our district is zoned for attendance for our three tiers. So what you see here are the attendance zone maps for our high school, middle school and elementary school. And what you see is a teeny little dot and you'll see the arrow. There is a new subdivision that is, I'm going up called Collins Ridge. And if you go to the next slide, I blew up that endpoint of that arrow. So if you go to the next, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Todd. This is, what you see here is that teeny little triangular type of shape that is an unassigned area. And that's where the subdivision, Collins Ridge subdivision is going up. And based on our assessment, what we would like to do, and if you go to the next slide, looking at some data here, based on our elementary, middle and high schools capacity and membership or enrollment, where they are at. And currently, what they are projecting in that subdivision is for elementary, 103 students, for middle, 58 students, and for high, I'll round that one up to 68 students from those families. Now, in, at this moment, I do not know what algorithm or, you know, what formula they use to determine that. I will learn that as I'm still learning some of these calculations. So based on those numbers and based upon the capacity of our schools, what we are recommending for assignment, and if you go to the next slide, what we are recommending is that we assign the families and students of the Collins Ridge subdivision to the Central Elementary Zone. And for middle, that we assign them to the ALS Stand Back Zone. And for high school, Cedar Ridge High School Zone. And we spoke of transportation because, you know, when you look at the map, color wise, when you're saying, okay, here's, you know, it's between a teeny little section of Grady Brown and a larger section, and then on the other side of that, they're Central. But the distance there is minimal enough that it doesn't really impact the transportation. And because Central is so under capacity, these are the recommendations that we would like to make. And so this is an action item. And we are recommending that the board assign the Collins Ridge subdivision to these following attendance zones. So any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Board members? Or a motion?
Well, I, I motion that we accept the recommendation and I really like what you've done, Dr. Dawson, what staff's done.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second? I heard Ms. Doyle first, so I'm going to have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Doyle, Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Motion passes and attendance zones for Collins Ridge have been set. I want to thank everyone for a very productive, expeditious meeting. Dr. Felder, Dr. Dawson, any closing thoughts before we adjourn?
No, I thank everyone as well. And we will definitely follow up on the items that we need to follow up on. So stay tuned and thank you. Madam Chair, a motion that be adjourned?
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens. Was that a second from Ms. Hauser? Yes. Second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? We're adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.